Welcome to the April 22 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. I do want to go ahead before I forget and say that we are operating off of the Governor's Executive Order where we are allowing virtual meetings. So I think Ms. Skels Harris, are you on Zoom?
I'm on, ma'am.
Awesome. All right. Good to hear your voice. Right. If you'll bow with me, I'm going to handle the prayer and the pledge. Father, I thank you for this night and this chance that we get to come together. Lord, that you give us guidance, that you give us wisdom, most of all, that you give us compassion for the decisions that we have to make. Lord, I pray for our entire country with things that are happening from the East Coast to the West Coast, all those in between, that most of all, you give us the ability to have understanding, to understand that we're not all the same, that we come from different backgrounds, that we come from different areas, but most of all, we have one goal, and that's, Lord, we want to do the right thing. Give us the ability to do that tonight. We thank you and we praise you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to our ceremonial items, I do think Chad Gerke is here, and Chad has sent several texts to us tonight, but I don't know of a night in Murfreesboro that you can say First Shot is having their fundraiser tonight, and so Ryan Tannehill and A.J. Brown of the Titans, they're in Murfreesboro tonight, and also Jack Nicklaus is here tonight at an MTCS fundraiser. So we've got one of the world's greatest golfers and two of, I'd say, the world's greatest football players that are here in Murfreesboro tonight, and they're a really big jet to accompany that, right Chad, that flew into Murfreesboro tonight?
Bought fuel.
And they bought fuel. So thank you for supporting our airport. To the golden bear, he bought fuel in Murfreesboro tonight, so we thank you. All right, we have a Stars Award tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As you all know, the Stars program highlights employees who succeed through attitudes reflecting service excellence, and I'm delighted this evening to announce that Carson Elder, who's a crew leader for the Street Department, is a Stars Award winner for the month of March. As you probably know, both the Street and Parks and Recreation Department use chainsaws to remove unsafe tree limbs from public areas. We all know that avoiding the dangers involving using a chainsaw requires someone with the knowledge and experience in this field to train other employees. Well, Carson has such experience, and he recently designed and led a day-long training class for his staff. The course involved a classroom presentation as well as hands-on training in the field. In fact, Carson went out of his way to develop the safety course and was happy to share his extensive knowledge to enhance the safety knowledge of those employees who were in attendance. So Carson, we thank you for keeping safety in the forefront of our minds.
All right, we'll move into our consent agenda. Are there any things that you see that need to be removed from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion, please?
Move for approval.
I don't even know. Ms. Brown, do you have this?
Blackjack, 21.
All right. Please call the roll.
Pick somebody.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into the minutes of the April 8, 2021 meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
All right, we'll move into old business, and we have ordinance 21006 amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 14. This is solid waste. Do we have any questions for Mr. Gore? I think this is an item we went over at our workshop.
Yes, it confused me for it being under old business. I thought this may be...
Well, I think because it was under...
It was under the workshop.
On the workshop agenda.
Gotcha. I'm still figuring this city council stuff out.
I'm just kidding.
So I didn't prepare a PowerPoint tonight because we did have such a good session at the workshop last Wednesday.
Oh, I thought we were voting on that.
I know. I'm also a little off, I'm a little off kilter since I'm going first. I'm usually, you know, last, so there's some weird stuff happening. So I'll just go over real quick for the public, informing the public kind of the highlights of what the ordinance changes are, revisions are. This ordinance does allow us to start charging for grass clippings, or clippings that are left loose by the curbside. If they are bagged, they are not charged a fee. If they are loose grass clippings due to the extra level of effort and the fact that it clogs up the storm sewer system, we are going to be imposing a $5 per occurrence fee. Also, it does, and my bullet is incorrect, the ordinance is correct, though, that we are going to want leaves bagged up between end of, 1st of February through the end of September. From October 1st through January 31st, those can be left loose at the curbside. We have the equipment, the vacuum machinery that actually pulls those loose leaves off the curb. Also, it just further clarifies that private lawn and tree service establishments must not use the city's curbside pickup, that they're responsible for disposing of brush-and-lem through their own means and methods. It does incorporate a resolution. That resolution is not before you tonight, it will come during second reading, but it allows, it sets up several different fees for large brush-and-lem items if there is actually a, for bulk item pickup. We did change that to say that the first three items are $10 each. Items greater than more than three for bulk item pickup would be charged $30 each, and that special events and special cleanup services would be charged at a price established by the department director of solid waste. And we also incorporate the solid waste collection design criteria into the ordinance, and we establish the discontinuation of services as defined in accordance with the Water Department and the Consolidated Utility District. So those are really the highlights of the ordinance revisions, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Gore? I know we discussed this at length at our workshop.
Correct.
There was some notification, how we're notifying the public, you might speak to that.
Yes, well, we're, even though I think the ordinance effective date may be at the new physical year, July 1, is would be my expectation, I guess it could go earlier. But we will be doing a soft rollout, if that's a proper term to use, where we are going to be using our social media, we are going to be getting some flags or some pickets that we can stick in people's front yards to notify them if they do have loose grass that, hey, as of this upcoming date, we are going to start charging. We've thought about actually getting kind of the information on an actual biodegradable bag and having some biodegradable bags made that we would hand out to certain citizens to let them know kind of the outline, and then they would have a usable bag to place their grass clippings in. So we're going to employ a lot of education and outreach and try to let a lot of folks know before that first invoice or fee would be levied against them.
It's the only really thing I would add to this, may have been the crux of Bill's question, is, you know, this seems like one of those things, we just need to make sure we communicate it.
Right.
Like, over-the-top communication. I mean, the last thing we want to do, I think we all understand the reason, but in part of that communication, the one thing that is hard to get across in terms of a sign, Facebook post, or a newspaper article, is kind of the why.
Right.
And, you know, however much of that we can get out would be really helpful on the front end as far as the sewer system, our stormwater system and all that kind of stuff. Everybody needs to know that's the main reason of this, and...
And Ms. Skels Harris did, we will do a bill insert. CUD can't do a bill insert because they can't insert just City of Murfreesboro residents versus their whole customer base, so they actually create postcards. So there'll be a small fee to get postcards developed by them so that they can send it out, but it'll reflect and insert that we, the Water Department, can put in our monthly bill. We had a lot of experience doing this with our AMI, our Advanced Metering Infrastructure project. We went above and above and over the top to let people know we were changing out their meters, that their meters were more than likely inaccurate, and that they were going to see higher bills because they were going to have a truly accurate meter being put in the ground, and so we kind of got some good experience going through that citywide implementation. So I think, I think we'll, if we don't do a good job, I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Bulk item pickup, just the last person, if, in a case of eviction, it's the last person to have the water on, correct?
Right. We're, it has prompted us to look at our landlord policy, but that, if someone basically takes off and doesn't pay a bill, then that'll be written off, quite honestly, right now.
And I'll just make one comment. I know a lot of this, for just context, has come about because of our concerns long-term about recovery on solid waste and what we do with that. Me, for one, this feels fine. Obviously, it's your recommendation, so I support it. I do, if anything, it feels a little light on the loose grass clippings to me, just because of what we talk about consistently from recovery and what it takes to actually pick those things up. But the other thing, and I mentioned this to you, as we continue to evaluate full recovery on the solid waste piece, especially keeping in mind that we're still disposing of solid waste in Rutherford County, if that were to change, that model looks very different for us, and I know we don't know that, but, you know, there is something to be said for a gradual increase. I would advocate more for a higher increase on that recovery and fewer times to the well, if you will.
Yep.
Just because I think everybody gets very sensitive about councils adjusted this, adjusted this, adjusted this. Just from my perspective, I'd rather make larger adjustments, fewer times.
Right. Good.
Just for feedback.
Good, good feedback. Appreciate that. Yes, right now, the resolution does just have $7.50 per month, which is the current rate, and the resolution does contain, still have the $30 for commercial curbside pickup. We wanted to hold off on second reading and adopting the resolution until you all had had time to have budget discussions with Aaron and Craig to determine if you did want to make any movement on that, on that monthly fee.
And I'm not advocating that, I'm just...
Right. But I totally understand, you're giving us more of a high-level process. Got it?
Mr. Gore?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we say something about people with disabilities? Did we mention, did we say something about a waiver or a price or something?
No, ma'am, we didn't really mention anything about waiving any fees or pricing, but we do, our routeware system that we are incorporating into our solid waste fleet, it does have the ability to flag a residence where there is a disabled citizen residing there, and that prompts the driver to be able to go and pick up where they do not have to bring their can or their cart to the curbside. If the driver has to go around back and pick something up, or if there is some other special accommodation, the drivers are aware of having to make that accommodation. So it does accommodate, but it's not necessarily, there's nothing in the ordinance to defer any fees.
Okay, that's what I was, I was thinking, something we talked about, I remember as you were speaking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. All right, we'll move into new business. Every year, we have a resolution, 21R12, unclaimed property requests that we have to pass.
This is a standard part of the government process for just getting back our unclaimed checks that we've sent off to the state.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll move to land use matters to consider planning commission recommendations for public hearings. Mr. McKnight, what do you have for us?
Mayor, council stand before you tonight to schedule public hearings. For four items, we would request those public hearings be scheduled for May the 20th. So for any questions?
So move. Second.
Real quick, Mr. McKnight, which, which public hearings are these on May 20?
Zoning, .66 acres for Lee Street rezoning, One East College PUD rezoning, 116 acres located along Burnt Knob, and then GD, 52 acres off along Veterans Parkway.
Okay. All right, we have a motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to items we have on motion. We have a change order from Boyce Ballard Construction for the Indoor Soccer Facility Foundation.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, members of council. As you recall, the city entered into a cooperative use agreement with TSSA, the Tennessee State Soccer Association, in April of 2019. As part of this agreement, we agreed to many enhancements that'll increase the capacity of that facility. Through these facility improvements, along with partnership with the Tennessee State Soccer Association, Richard Siegel Soccer Park is really positioned to become a destination for soccer development, along with regional and national tournaments. If these contracts seem familiar to you, that's for a reason, you've seen them before. You approved these contracts back in February 27 of 2020, and then the week after you approved those, we stopped most CIP spending due to the uncertainty of COVID. So before you tonight is a combination of change orders and new contracts that will initiate all of the enhancements that we've agreed to, except for the new office space, which is currently in the design process. So the one you referenced first is the Boyce Ballard. This is a change order for $22,880, and that's increased material cost, which makes the new total for the foundation of the indoor structure $799,679.84. Funds for these, this project are allocated in the CIP.
Any questions?
If there aren't any, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to clear span fabric structures agreement for the indoor soccer facility.
Yes, Mayor, this is for the 90,000 square foot indoor structure that would be put on the foundation that you just approved. The previous contract was approved, then we decided not to execute the contract. So this new contract is $2,637,292. There's an increase from what you approved in 2020 of $93,372, and that is just the cost of steel has increased that much. So that is the increase. This is a new contract, not a change order. Funds for this element of the project are also covered in CIP, and I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to Warner Athletics Construction Change Order Number Two for Soccer Park Turf.
Do you want to do Musco lighting, Mayor?
18.
18.
Sorry, I put a check mark there. Musco lighting agreement for Jordan Farm Soccer Fields at Richard Siegel Park.
Thank you, Mayor. This is also something that we included in the agreement. This is one contract that you didn't see last time. It's a new contract for LED lighting of the six fields at the Jordan Farm Practice Facility. This contract cost is $1,122,792 to light those fields. Funds for this project are allocated in the CIP as well, and I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
I'll move for approval. Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
No.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to Warner Athletics Construction Change Order Number Two for Soccer Park.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a change order from the original contract with Warner Athletic Construction to convert the four remaining fields. So we've completed three, they're finishing up the fourth right now, from natural synthetic turf on the first phase of this. This is a change order of $3,101,722. So originally, when we brought this back in February of 2020, you approved all eight of the fields. We discussed this and decided to only continue and execute a contract for four of those fields due to the uncertainty. So we decided to go ahead and continue this with the same contract after consulting, purchasing illegal, and do this as a change order to complete the other four fields that we've agreed to. So funds for this are also allocated in the CIP, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Can I just clarify something real quick? Something you just said, is it, we're still using the same contract that we had?
Correct.
So same...
Same contractor. Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm surprised it hadn't gone up in price, frankly.
I'm sorry, this, I don't know the difference in this cost. This did go up just a little bit when we decided to do the first four fields originally. There are material costs increased, I can get that to you. They were pretty minimal, though, rather than continuing with the eight fields total on the front end. So I think it was specifically drainage pipe and some of the concrete that we needed.
So do we know how much is going to go up from 3.1 million?
This is the price. This is the change order price, the contract price.
What was it before? What was the original price?
I'd have to get that back to you. This, the total contract price I've got in my paperwork, and if you give me a second, I can find it. Are you asking Councilman Wade about the original?
Just for this particular item that we're discussing? It was included in a total of eight.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying? Yeah. But there's a, but there's an amount and adjustment that there's going to be additional sums, and we need to know what that is.
I think I have the information that you're looking at. So the total for the eight fields that I brought to you back in 2020 was $5,801,608. And then, let me see if I can pull... I'd have to, I don't have the number in front of me about what the first price was, but I can get you that cost increase. I don't have that specified on my budget sheet right now.
I never can remember. Is this something we're going to vote on twice, or is it?
No, sir.
No.
And Nate, just for clarification, we're saying the original contract sum was 3 million, the new contract sum is 6 million, and it's because we went from eight fields to four fields?
The original contract sum that we had was 5.8 million. Okay. I need to go back. We renegotiated and only did four of those fields because of just the uncertainty, so we had a contract. What I don't have in front of me of what that revised contract price is, and I think that's what you're looking for, so you're looking at the total difference, and I don't have that number in front of me, but I could probably find it pretty quick.
So we started out at 5.8, we've already spent three-ish on the first.
I could speculate, but I'd hate to speculate like this. I think I remember the price, but I'd have to, I'd have to go find that number, what currently, those four fields.
When you say substantial, are you, minimal, are we less than 10%?
With that number, I mean, it was just material cost increase, but I'd hate to speculate. I don't remember exactly what that number was, but I can find that for you if you want me to. I could probably find it, honestly, before the end of this meeting.
Can we, you want to back it up to the...
Yeah, why don't we put that at the very end?
Okay. Let me see, let me do some...
We're to the end, aren't we?
Well, we got a couple more things to talk about, so, but when we get to other business, if you haven't, we'll see if you found it by then.
Let me see what I can do.
No pressure, Nate.
I do my best.
I do want to, real quickly, while we're really talking about parks, you know, I know we've all been getting emails about different things, but I thought it was appropriate that someone had put out there that the city of Murfreesboro has, you know, 700 acres of parkland and that we had less than Smyrna, so I called Mayor Reed, just joking, going and getting all their information, but we actually in Murfreesboro have 1,138 acres of park inventory in the city, and that doesn't include the 840 property, the 96 property, which is another, just say roughly 300 acres, and that doesn't include 73 acres that we all voted on last week to put under. So it's much closer to 1,500 acres than it is to 700 acres. But I thought Angela and Nate put that information together for us, I thought it was good for us to know that, and that we were going to update our website to make sure we had that information, or we already have updated our website to put that information, so. All right, let's move to salt barn roof replacement.
Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, I'm standing in for Raymond this evening. Before you is a recommendation to approve the award for low bid, the salt roof barn replacement to stubble field construction. The roof of the salt department's barn requires replacement in order to avoid the loss of salt stored for this coming year. Two bids were received, stubble field construction was the lowest responsible bidder at $164,000. Contract documents have been reviewed and are pending legal, and this is funded CIP budget. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into, you have several beer permits.
Yes, Mayor, we have three regular beer permits tonight. One is a new location at, on Old Fort Parkway, another new location on J.B. Jackson, and an ownership change on Memorial Boulevard. There's also a special event permit for Center for the Arts for three different dates.
So move. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.[1793.83]
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any board and commission appointments? All right, any statements to be paid? Okay, Nate, you look like you've got some information for us.
Mayor, Adam helped me find the rest of the contract. Sorry, didn't have that originally. So I think that number that you're looking for is the difference, the cost of waiting was $379,574 is the increased cost for the second phase of the project, dividing the project up.
Is that, is that the, is that the total extra for both segments, actually?
Correct.
Like for splitting it? So like if we, if we were at two, if we were at 5.8, you would surmise that half the fields would have cost 2.9. Did the first section?
But the second part of the phasing of the fields has the most of the civil package.
Okay.
That's included with all the drainage, and then also digging out the pits and digging out, and we need more water retention areas, so our existing detention areas have to be dug out multiple feet.
It's about 200, so less than 10%.
And that also, if you remember last Wednesday, I brought to you that change order for the unsuitable soils, so that would add another 100, not to exceed $120,000 for that project.
Yeah, man, I mean, we kind of had to do it. I think it was the right thing to do either way, so I'm a move for approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion is second. This is for item 19, Warner's Athletic Construction Change Order Number Two for Soccer Park Turf. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
No.
Mr. Wright.
No.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have two items of other business for emergency pipe repair and professional services contract.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Kayla Walker with Project Development. Tonight, staff is requesting approval for the times and material construction contract and professional services agreement for the sportscom emergency pipe repair. Severely corroded ductile iron piping was discovered at sportscom restroom facilities. The corrosion was caused by leaks from the outdoor pool prior to the previous pool's renovation. The below slab piping will need to be replaced at the restrooms and necessary pipe connections. Further scope also includes replacing the flooring and plumbing fixture replacements. Due to the extent of the damage so far uncovered, staff is proposing a time and materials construction contract with Rice with a projected cost of repair estimated at about $250,000 right now. The professional services agreement is with Robert Warren and Associates, and it is estimated at $15,700. Any questions? These are two separate motions, but if it's easier and you guys don't have any questions, we could do it in one. And I think some pictures were also sent through email to you guys of the piping.
We can do it in one motion?
Can we?
Two motions, all right. I'll make a motion that we approve the first item.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
No, the first.
Can we clarify which?
Now, the first, the first item, this would be for, not the professional services contract, for the actual construction contract.
Yes, sorry.
That's the 250,000.
Yes.
Yes. It's a time and materials construction contract, but we're estimating about 250,000.
And, I mean, I know, as we discuss these things, I like that. Do we really have another option?
No, we don't.
Okay. We have to flush the toilets in sports.
Yeah.
Right, and so.
It's really, really bad.
Like the doctor told me the other day, you are not leaving here without surgery. Here is a 0% chance.
Call the roll.
There's a, he seconded it.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
First of all, I want to ask a question. Mayor McFarland, have you had your medicine tonight?
Have I had medicine tonight? No, I've been at a soccer game tonight. That's why I'm not wearing a tie, so I. I think we had, I think Ms. Skels Harris just voted aye, did she say?
She did say aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Yes, aye.
Mr. Martin.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, and we now need to consider the professional services contract for 15,000 some odd dollars.
$700.
Okay.
Move, so moved on the second.
And I seconded the second.
We have a motion is second. This is quickly gotten off the rails.
Sorry.
It's early, too.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
I choose no.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you, Kayla. All right, do we have any other business from staff? I do want to make a comment that I think Nate has, even though it was additions to contracts, not necessarily change orders, I think you have got Chris Griffith beat so far this year in change orders that has come to the council, so that's saying a lot. I do want to go under other business, and this is not really anything for motion, but to talk about the landfill. We've had quite a few discussions since Wednesday of last week, and Mr. Gore is going to bring you up to, really to talk to you what, we had a meeting at TDEC early this morning with the Commissioner of TDEC, the Assistant Commissioner, the person, Lisa, who is over landfills, and they wanted, gave us sort of an update on what the process is, and then I will update you on what we talked about. And then I just, before the meeting, had a conference call with the Republic that will fill you in on that. So Darren.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Commissioner, Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, Commissioner David Saliers, Deputy Commissioner Greg Young, the Director of the Division of Solid Waste, Lisa Huey, and an External Affairs Officer, Jaclyn Mathupi. Anyway, we kind of went through the history. We had about 45 minutes to meet with them before they, I think they ended up being about 15 minutes late to their next meeting, but we kind of gave them the history of the landfill, the agreements that were in place, the odor issues that have been going on, and we really asked, we're asking them what the process was that, now that Republic has, has applied for an expansion, which is effectively, I think, a 95% expansion, almost doubling the capacity of the landfill. So Ms. Huey let us know that what they had applied, what they had submitted was a Part One of a two-part application. The Part One application obligated TDEC to respond within 30 days, and it was, the Part One is, in essence, a very generic general application that kind of says, here's, here's what we're wanting to do, here's kind of the new footprint of the landfill, here's the volume of expansion that we want. And TDEC's really, part of their response is to issue a public notice, to let, to let the, the public know that that, that that expansion has been applied for. Then you really get into Part Two, which is really the tough, I would call it the tougher part. Republic has 12 months from filing Part One to really turn in a very extensive hydrogeologic study, detailed engineering drawings and specifications, and then that goes into a very detailed review by TDEC that can take months. So she had said something about, by the time Part One is applied for, it does take, it could take between one and two years before anything is formally approved. But we did ask about the central solid, I don't know if you want me to get into that. We did talk about the central region solid waste board's role in this, and whether or not they could, could deny the permit or the landfill expansion. The board can deny it, but if it's deemed arbitrary by the Commissioner, the TDEC Commissioner, he can overrule or repeal that denial. Also, Republic would have the option to go to Chancery Court and bypass TDEC altogether if they believe that the denial by that board was a, was arbitrary. So that's kind of the long and short of it, but that's, that's the process, so nothing's going to happen super quickly is what I got out of it, but there is, if they, I think what I felt like was if they, if they checked all the boxes.
We met Tuesday with Republic here at City Hall. They had three, three individuals, including the new General Manager of their, of their, the landfill, Michael Clausen, and we talked about numerous issues, but the main thing I wanted to ask the council, you know, we have talked about a resolution, but I asked them on Tuesday, and as a matter of fact, just had a conference call with them prior to our meeting, but I asked them to withdraw their application and let us at least go through the process of the RFP that we're talking about right now with the county, and they didn't say no. So they, we explained what the process was and why that we were asking them to withdraw the application, that, you know, we felt like this was a little premature, but when we'd not even been through the RFP process, and as of tonight, they're still waiting, and they had meetings today with their legal counsel, as well as their CEO and COO, to give us an answer back on whether they would withdraw that or not. I committed to them that we would, since we are not in a, based on meeting with TDEC today, we're not in a huge rush to pass a resolution, that we would at least, in my opinion, give Republic the ability to do what we talked about, which was withdraw that to let us get through the RFP process and see what that next step is. So I would ask the council, before we pass a resolution, let's see what they come back with. Hopefully, they come back that they're withdrawing that application and allow the county to go through that process, and if not, then we can pass a resolution as soon as we get that answer. Darren, did I miss anything on our meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
Mayor, at the workshop, we, I think we passed, made a motion for them to come and speak to us. Do we feel like that's still necessary, or based on the conversations that have had?
Darren, Hut.
I think, well, this is just my personal opinion, what prompted them to kind of circumvent the RFP process and kind of what I would say, do a knee-jerk application for expansion, at least what they relayed to us or communicated to us is that they got spooked. Waste Management had applied for a new cell at a construction demolition landfill or expansion in Davidson County, and I guess that, that Regional Board there had denied it based on some of their zero waste goals, and so they turned, they said that the expansion of that CND landfill was inconsistent with their solid waste plan, and so they got denied. And so I think Waste Management is probably taking them to court. When they saw that occur, I think they, they said, they didn't, they had heard that that could potentially be a tactic taken by Murfreesboro or Rutherford County, and they wanted to get that application in prior to someone trying to create an inconsistency with our 10-year goal in the expansion of the landfill. So to me, that was at least a, a trigger that, when we talked to them 60 days ago, that didn't exist. So it seemed to be something changed, they said they got spooked, and they went ahead and applied.
One of the conversations that we had on Tuesday was, I put it in these terms, that if we could work half as much and still make the same amount, I think all of us would take that choice, and that if there was the way that as we go through this RFP process that that landfill, you could extend the life of the existing landfill if that was just a Rutherford County landfill in Murfreesboro. And, you know, obviously, we've all talked about that there's a cost with doing that moving forward, but, you know, as opposed to us having material brought in by 30, 34 other municipalities and counties that come here, that if there's a way that we could work together where this is extending the life, but at the same time providing a service to Rutherford County, then, you know, the landfill's here, so that could be a discussion. So we throw, we threw all kinds of things on the table. We even talked about, they were taking it back to their team, that one thing threw out was that we would like to know what their plans are for odor, and if they would put in writing what their plan would be and how they're going to mitigate the odor on the north side of town. They gave us, I think if anything, it would be great to have them come in and explain what they, explain to us about what they're doing with their gas extraction systems and what they're investing to fix that odor on that side of town. And that, it was, I think they agreed that they probably had not put their best foot forward for many years in the community, so, which was nice to hear, that we weren't making a lot of this up on, on the stuff that we've had come across, so.
Did they give you some kind of commitment as to when they were going to have a, whether they would withdraw their application?
Yeah, a little bit ago, they felt like that they could have an answer to us next week.
I think we should wait for that response, and then if, if the answer is they're not going to withdraw it, then I think we need to proceed with asking them to come speak to us.
I agree.
And potentially a resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm certainly good with giving them a week, you know, I mean.
I'm good.
Or two, I mean, frankly, I'd be, you know, I'm not.
The TDEC, the TDEC Director and the Assistant Director assured us that this was not a decision that would be made, you know, in the next 30 to 45 days. They do have to answer within 30 days once that they receive that application, but it's not anything before it would go to the central, the central solid waste board and then to the state, but.
Seems like that first phase is just to make public know this, their intent is something.
It, it is the negative, I think, that we learned on that first phase, once that first phase is applied for, that sort of the train's rolling then.
They got 12 months.
Yeah, it would be much better in what we explained to, to Republic, that if they withdrew that application, then that allowed all of us to work together. It's very, I think it's going to be very difficult, and we relayed this, to have a true RFP process, to talk about what we're going to do next with solid waste, not only in Murfreesboro, but the region while an expansion is sort of hanging out there. And they agreed.
And I'm good with that, too. I just, since we voted on that and said we were going to ask them, I just wanted to connect the dots on that to say why we were not going to ask them to come.
No, we did, I think, unless I'm misremembering, we did relay what the council had voted and that we would like to have them come speak before the council.
They, they relayed or communicated that they've done a lot more work on this gas extraction system than I think any of us knew about. And the best way I can describe it is like they have sunk money into this thing for the past couple of years. Now, maybe it was requirement, maybe they're just doing, maybe they're just getting ahead of what's ultimately required, but that they have created maybe the engine or the core of this extraction system, and that they have a $2.8 million expansion, I guess, actually go out and, for lack of a better term, put the fingers out into the system to bring it back to that, to that core, where they can, where they can process it. And, and I liked the analogy that Michael used. He said, it's kind of like you boil water, you keep turning the heat up, and you don't see anything, you don't see anything, you don't see anything, and finally, when you get the heat properly, you see that boil happen. He said they, he, he said that by July, that they expect to have that construction complete, and that we should see a marked improvement. I, I wrote that down.
I don't, yeah, I don't want anyone who's watching this to think that we are, are not willing to fight. I think that we really made it very clear to them that we felt like that this was a, I think their exact words, that this was a horrible idea, that we would need to go through the RFP process to talk about what's next, and so I don't want anyone who's watching this or reporting on it to think that we're saying that we're, we're giving up, but I think at the same time, we were just saying, let's find out what our alternatives are[1741.83] are before we take that route.
Right. And I think, again, reviewing a business case or what affords that the Republic, the expansion, all that is going to get, not really be considered, in my opinion, if the odor and the bad neighbor component of the landfill still exists. Until they fix that bad neighbor, being the, the smelliest thing around, it almost just really short circuits any, any real review of a, of a business model.
Absolutely. I think that's fair assessment. All right, any questions? Craig, are we meeting next week?
Well, we have a few meetings next week. We have Monday evening, joint meeting with the MED Pension Committee at 5:00. And then the Community Investment Study Group is meeting on Wednesday at 4:00. So, right now, we're not planning on Thursday. Next meeting for council itself be the 6th of May.
Okay, I would ask that if we do have information that comes back from what we just discussed, that, you know, we may had, would have a quick meeting if we get information back.
Well, we'll hold the Thursday meeting there. We won't cancel that until the very end.
I intended to last week, just say this, and just kind of as a brief, keep you guys up to speed on the first community investment, the MED proceeds meeting that we had a couple weeks ago now. Just kind of, very quickly today, it was just kind of introductory in nature, where we all kind of got to know who each other were, and sort of laid out some very basic premises of, hey, this is what this is, this is what this isn't. And, you know, we, we talked about things as just, you know, what day of the week are we going, is best for everybody to meet, and those kinds of things. So, nothing really substantive from the first meeting, but just kind of in, in the spirit of keeping you guys up to speed on what's going on there. And I'll try to keep you regularly updated when we have those meetings. Sound like we're going to meet every, was it two or three or four weeks? We're going to meet every couple of weeks or so to start, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you taking minutes?
We are, yeah. There are minutes recorded, yeah.
All right, any other business from the council? All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.
And are we having a meeting?
Are we having a meeting now?
No, I don't think so. We just talked about everything.
We just talked about it.